Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everybody, for taking time to join us today. It's time to start the meeting. It's 4:30. Stephanie, could you please do a roll call for us?
I'm happy to. We, you two are the only commissioners on there.
Oh, nobody's on the, um. Wow, okay.
Is there anybody waiting, Tiffany?
Coming in now.
Coming in now, okay.
There's Janelle, there's Denise.
I don't see, uh, okay. You have enough of a quorum, shouldn't you?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you please, um?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hoff. Commissioner Monte.
Here.
Commissioner Orman. Commissioner Powell.
Present.
Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here, present. We have enough of a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, um. First thing I'd like to do before we go forward, if you all don't mind, to have a moment of silence for Commissioner Hardy, if that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you all for that. Just wanted to not go forward and not, not recognize our service to the, uh, to the community and on the board. So, thank you all. One of the first things I'd like to do is, uh, thank past Chair Monte and co-chair Powell for your leadership during the pivotal time in this agency. Appreciate every member of the board for volunteering your time to serve the citizen, this great city, and, and the champion of mission of the Housing Authority as we continue to support, the gym that we have, our director, Executive Director Ms. Askew. She has great vision and, and making great strides, so, to change the landscape of New Bern. So, just want to thank all of you all for your participation and, and you've, and not taking volunteering lightly because it's a serious assignment, and I wanted to personally thank you all for, for your time. Next, next thing I want to address is, uh, do we have any members from the public that want to make comments?
I believe we, Mr. Chairman, we have our new, uh, on, uh, who's, our new, uh, there she is.
Who's?
As our new commissioner.
Okay.
We would like to, um, recommend a new resident commissioner to replace, um, Ms. Commissioner Hardy. And we have a resident at Trent Court who is open to, um, that, and her name is Sulean Blackman, and we'll be sending her name to, um, the mayor as a recommendation for replacement for Commissioner Hardy. And she's on with us today, and, um, she's been more than open and willing to serve. And so, uh, we thank her for, for that.
Well, welcome to joining us, Sulean.
Okay.
You're on mute. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It's Jamie Norman. Yeah, welcome, Sulean. I think that's great. There are some procedural requirements, though, that we have to go through before we can appoint a resident commissioner for this, for Lisa's spot. The general statutes obviously require that we appoint a resident commissioner if one volunteers through, through, through our policy, and our policy sets forth a system where you have a series of reviews and elections by the resident councils. And the mayor does not actually appoint someone unless the resident councils don't do, don't meet, for example. So, I, I think it's fine, um, and we can, we can work through it. I just want to make sure that we all know that we're going to follow precisely what the rules are for appointing.
Understood.
So, that's right.
Noted.
Attorney Norman, thank you, thank you for the clarification, Attorney Norman. You, you saved me some voice.
Thank you. And right now, our resident council is pretty slim to none, so.
Right. I know, and we'll, we'll work through it. I just want to make it clear that we're, we're gonna have to just check all the boxes.
Yeah, we need to. Thank you for that. That, that's why you're sitting in the shotgun seat.
Thank you.
Okay, um. There's no comments at the time, I don't want to have registered for that. Okay, staff, say again, is that here someone?
I was just speaking. I had found my mute button.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, any, um, staff comments or commissioner comments at this time?
Um, I, I have one. Um, I am not sure if I may, and I'm not sure if it's the appropriate time or not. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
I'm not sure if it's the appropriate time or not, but there is a, um, a, a facility, I've always spoken with, um, Ms. Askew about this, about the, um, I think it's on Red Robin Lane that is getting ready to, um, they're, they're kicking their residents out or giving them notice to leave or vacate, because I think that they're going to build some other condos there. Is this an appropriate time, Ms. Um, Askew, to just let all of the other commissioners know about that, or?
Sure, you can share that.
Okay, um, I was informed that, um, I'm not sure if you are familiar with where I'm talking about, but the, um, the complex that I'm talking about is behind, um, Food Lion, um, it's on Red Robin Lane. I think it's called Robin's Nest. It is.
It needs to be torn down.
It, it is being torn down. However, those res, I'm just informing everybody, that those residents are going to need someplace to go. So, being who we are, I just want to make you aware of that, and maybe we can get some of those residents to move into some vacant apartments that we have available.
That's good.
Uh, might we, might, might we want to have some sort of event over there? I mean, we only have, what, we have about 10 apartments. Of course, Pam can talk to us about that when we get further on down the road, but, uh, just to get them, get them, get some of them anyway.
Yeah, I think that would be good if we could, and thanks for sharing that, Commissioner Reddick. Yeah, well, there, there's a need, and we have, uh, we have some apartments available, so, you know, what we can to, hey, like, like, uh, Ms. Askew and them were doing, uh, in the parade. They were handing out little candy stickers and, you know, hey, we, 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 opportunities. It's, it's a moment of opportunity to be a blessing to somebody, give, provide housing for somebody, because I'm quite sure there's some concern with people when they have to move out.
Um, absolutely, and may I add, I have been over there before to do donations and everything, or to do donate, to give donations, especially around Christmas time, and, um, some of them are foreign, meaning, um, it, it was like a third world country over there. So, I'm just kinda, I don't know if we need someone that can speak, uh, the language, but there were several, I, I don't know. Anyway, it's something that we probably need to investigate, and I'm just, um, making the board aware of it.
I believe a lot of those residents at, at the Red Robin Lane property were introduced to that property by the Catholic charities. So, they might be an avenue that I'm sure their heads up with it, and we could probably use their assets to get with them to do any kind of language. Because you're correct, there are a lot of, I believe, Burmese.
Burmese, yeah, that's, that's, uh, what behind, where our church was, our church was right there in Red Robin Lane with that, that strip mall, and we used to service them, and there was a, there was a Burmese back there, yeah. Again, that's good information, and, um, just take our relationships and see what we can do. Thank you a lot, Mrs. Monte, Commissioner Monte.
Thanks, Ms. Reddick.
Yeah, um.
I do have one thing to add, is that, uh, we, um, just, Jamie, correct me if this is the right time, but just to make a, um, amendment to our agenda. In the last stages of today, uh, we were able to, um, put some information together for a joint resolution with the city, and, um, I wanted to, um, add that, uh, to our agenda to, today. And, um, once we get down to the resolution, um, Jamie will be able to discuss that further with you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we could do that under new business. That'd be easy with your approval.
Okay. It's good. Next, next item on the agenda is the, um, approve of the minutes. Could you, uh, I know we've looked at them, but could you take a look at the minutes and, um, uh, take a quick look at the min, minutes? If we, you know, if everyone take a look at, and if we want to do so, wish to go ahead to approve them, uh, if you have any concerns or questions?
There's a typo in the New Bern Towers report of unpaid, I don't understand that number. That would be the only thing I would have. It's page. Where is it? Page two of your packet?
Towers.
I see it.
Yeah, the eight forty-four point eighty-one point.
Zero zero. Yes.
We will, um, get that corrected. Have to go back and find out what that exact number is, but it's probably.
It's, it's probably eight hundred and forty-four.
It is, I believe, I, yeah, it, I, I believe it should be point eight one, but I, I will double check from, sorry about that.
That's okay. I move that we've approved the minutes.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Are there any other further questions? The question is, uh, for the minutes. Hearing none, all those in favor of seven to minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the financial report for Arlene.
Are you on mute?
Arlene?
I'm sorry, I was just going on, I apologize. I am, I will be covering the financial report in January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Reading from left to right, starting with Trent Court, the total operating revenue, one hundred seventy thousand, twenty-one dollars. New Bern Towers, eighty thousand, three hundred seventy-three, that, three hundred seventy-three dollars. Consolidated income, two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. Okay, the total operating expenses for Trent Court, eighty-seven thousand, forty-six dollars. CHI business activity, twelve thousand, eighteen dollars. New Bern Towers, sixty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars. Consolidated total of one hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars. The total revenue and operating expenses, Trent Court, eighty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars. CHI business activity, a loss of twelve thousand, eighteen dollars. New Bern Towers, fifteen thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars. Consolidated total, eighty-six thousand, five hundred three dollars. Okay, um, the total net income loss for Trent Court, the income of eighty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars. CHI business activity, a loss of twelve thousand, eighteen dollars. New Bern Towers, an income of fifteen thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars. Consolidated total, eighty-six thousand, five hundred three dollars. And that, um, if anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, we accept the, uh, income report as presented.
Second?
Second.
This is that, no more. As she said, in the further discussion of questions, hearing none. All those in favor of submitting the report as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, like sign? All right, um. Next on the agenda is Executive Director Report, Ms. Askew.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to share that the staff and I, we participated in the Black History Parade on Saturday. It was a great event. Uh, we all had a great time. This parade was a new experience for me because, um, the staff informed me that, you know, we're supposed to throw out candy as we're going through the parade, and I thought, you know, that's a, a different, different for me because I've never been to a parade like that, and so, I said, if we're gonna throw out candy, we're gonna throw out notices that says we have apartments for rent, so. We had little notices with candy taped to it, and we were, uh, giving those out, um, you know, at the parade to the, the parents and, uh, throwing out candy to the kids. So, uh, we had a, we had a really, really great time, and so, it was, it was really fun, so. And then the other great thing is that Carolina Avenue is fully occupied, um, so they're a hundred percent leased. They, they did that, uh, you know, in a few months, so that, that's really great. And I think, and I'll confirm for sure, that I believe there's about, um, eight, uh, Trent Court residents that actually, uh, went out there. Um, and so, I'll get that number confirmed from, um, staff and, and let you know for sure at our next meeting of how many, um, actual Trent Court residents are, that, um, are out there. The next thing is, of course, and always, uh, on the forefront is the Trent Court project. We are getting things together on that. We're at a place now where, um, as you'll see, um, in, in one of the resolutions where we are, um, completing a joint agreement with the city for the environmental review that's required by HUD and FEMA on the property. And so, once we get that done and get the review, um, taking place, we'll be probably ten steps further to, um, getting the project flows and getting the, the FEMA grant to us, so that we can begin to work on, um, demolishing the property and rebuilding, um, some more affordable units. As Commissioner Reddick shared, there's definitely a need to get more units here in New Bern, and, um, it's the goal of the agency to, um, replace more than just, um, the ones that we demolished, so. Um, we, we should see great things coming in the next couple of years. The next thing that I have, um, is that, uh, we're looking for a development committee to, um, hear firsthand what's going on with that and provide recommendations, and then from those recommendations, we'll bring back to the full board. And so, I'll let, uh, Chairman Scott, um, talk about the development committee, uh, members that he's, uh, recommended to be on this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Askew. The members that I'm recommending to be on part of this team, development team, is Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Orman, and Commissioner Monte, and myself.
Okay. All right, and then, um, from that, I'll work with, uh, four of you guys on setting up a meeting time, and then we'll make sure we get, um, the notices out to the public on that. And for the most part, those meetings will be held, um, through Zoom, and they, uh, may not tie in with this day because, um, we don't want this day to be full with finance committee meeting, event board meeting. So, more than likely, um, this meeting will take place on, uh, a day outside of that, and we'll make sure, um, all parties, uh, will be informed, and the community will be informed on those meeting dates.
I have a question for Mr. Norman. Since we will be discussing purchasing property and that sort of thing, how, what sort of open meeting, uh, rules should we follow?
Do you mean for this meeting or for the other?
For, for the others, when we start having actively meeting.
Well, when the, when, when the Board of Commissioners meets in quorum, and you are discussing the acquisition of real properties or planning or negotiating the acquisition of real property, you may, if you want to, go into closed session under the meetings law. You're not required to, uh, but you can. And, and acquisition means, generally, it's not defined in the statutes, but it means the identification, the negotiation, the finalization of which piece is the property you want to purchase.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, the next thing is, uh, finance committee. There are current members on there, what, since we've changed officers and we have new signatories, Commissioner, um, or Chairman Scott is going to, um, reappoint the finance committee.
I don't know why I thought I did already. I, that was in another meeting, okay? Okay, yeah. That was the executive, um, the executive team, which consists of myself, um, the co-chair, Commissioner Howe, and, um, Treasurer, um, Commissioner Reddick, and Mr. Monte. Past Chair.
Okay, uh, and then, lastly, um, I'll end with really, really great and fun news. We had a Valentine's Day celebration at the New Bern Towers with the residents, and it was one of the best, like, I just had a really great month, everything was the best. But, um, we had, um, we gave out, uh, Valentine's Day gifts, they had pizza, and, um, they also had, uh, a Valentine's Day king and queen. So, the residents, they were, um, they had three queens to vote for and two, three, no, they had four queens to vote for and three kings. And so, um, the residents actually did the voting themselves. They selected their own king and queen, and, um, so, we had Ms., um, Tina, she was the queen, and she was really excited. She'd lived at the property for sixteen years, and so, she's a Valentine's Day queen. And, um, Mr. Bell was the Valentine's Day king, and to his, um, excitement, he didn't know that his name was on the ballot. Somebody put his name on there, and so, he was more than happy to, to be the king, and, um, they had a really good day. They listened to music. We had one of the residents, she was the resident DJ for the day, and, um, we had one resident that I think he knew every song that she played, and he sung every song. And so, they had a, um, they had a really good, really good time, and, um, the staff, I, I had a great time, and I know the staff had a great time, too. So, um, that, that's all I have.
First of all, thank you for your creativity and keeping the residents involved. It, it matters that they can, uh, be engaged when it's more than just a challenge or issue going on, but it helps them to continue to know that they are important, and so, thank you for, for what you and your team are doing because you don't do it by yourself, you and your team are, are making these things happen. So, thank you all for, for what you're doing and, and pouring into their lives like this. I'm quite sure in the season that lives, it, it's making them feel better about themselves, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, question or comments for the Executive Director? Okay, next we have the report on the, um, New Bern Towers, Ms. Latasha Simmons.
Oh, um, Ms. Simmons is a new grandma, um, and, uh, she was a new grandma yesterday, and so, her daughter and the baby came home, um, today, and so, Ms. Minor is gonna, uh, present her report for her.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations to her.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today I will be presenting, um, the Towers, um, report. She has a hundred and six units, ninety-six occupied, ten is vacant, and she has a occupancy rate for nine, at ninety-one percent. It had one move in and two move outs. Tenant accounts receivable, um, two, uh, charged, two, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Received, twenty-four thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Unpaid, four thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and eighty cents. She had a tar rate of eighty-five percent. Uh, pending terminations, non-payment was ten, criminal activity zero, other violations was two. Work orders, she has three outs, uh, three outstanding requests. Uh, request for the month of January, request received, twenty-nine, completed, twenty-six, pending, zero, and three, um, was pending parts. Um, she had fifteen total calls for the police report and zero for the fire report.
Before we move on to Trent Court, I just, um, just to share, her vacancies are, um, a little high. I think, of course, you know, she said she, she has two bedrooms, which, of course, those are really hard to rent. And, um, we have recently placed the advertisement and, on the reload, um, drugstore bags for the New Bern Towers, so hopefully, uh, families will see that and, uh, reach out to us. And then, we're also doing, um, monthly advertisements through Facebook for both of our properties. And, um, on a sad note, at the Towers, we had several residents that passed away, um, including Ms., uh, Commissioner Hardy. And so, um, it's been, they've been a little sad over there, uh, in the last week or so. So, uh, her rates on the vacancies will probably be a little higher next month just to, um, the residents that have passed away, and some, um, are sick now, and they may not be able to retire.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I will be, um, presenting my own report today for, um, Trent Court. I have a total of a hundred and ten units, ninety-one is occupied, and I have a, um, vacant nineteen. Occupancy rate, eighty-three percent. So, um, next week, we will be doing a RFP, um, for unit terms due to, um, maintenance staff. We only have two. And, um, we just calling and, calling and sending out letters, uh, to see if the ones that's on the waitlist is still interested, and we pushing more pre-applications. And by networking and partnering with, um, schools and, um, other organizations. We have two move-ins and four move-outs. We had three to go to Carolina Avenue, so that's, um, for that. Tenant accounts receivable, twenty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and ten cent was charged. Received was twenty-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars and thirty cent. Um, unpaid was two thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and eighty cents. We had a tar rate of ninety percent. Um, pending terminations, um, non-payment was forty, criminal activity zero, other violation zero. Um, work orders, outstanding request was two. And, um, request received were forty-four, completed forty-two. Request received with forty-four, completed forty-two, pending repair is two and pending parts was zero. Uh police report was eighteen, fire report was zero. And I would like to add that um we sent out notices to the residents um concerning past due rents. And that um they could contact the property managers for repayment plan. And um that we would begin to do late fees starting March the first. Um because we had stopped adding the late fee zone due to COVID, um the CARES Act. Um and that we'll begin to do uh start processing evictions through the courts on April the first. So it's very important that they contact us concerning repayments. Uh also to add, I'm sorry, I meant to say that uh we also um. Once a applicant gets approved, we refer them to um. RCS Salvation Army Catholic Charities to see if they could get um assistance with um. Both or one of the other. Thank you.
I have a question on a repair pending. I see where the towels had three, but they are pending uh parts. Uh the two for um Trent Court, do you know why they're, why they, why they're pending?
Yes, sir, um Commissioner Scott is because of the ceiling. It could not be repaired until the roof was done because.
Yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think the three uh pending repairs that are at the towers are really in um. The vacant units that we're trying to get ready.
Okay, okay.
But I don't think they're in um the, the residence um actual unit.
That's great, um Ms. Askew, since the hiring of the new maintenance guy, there's been a big turnaround and all this um. Repair and some of the challenges that were there, so uh just to let the gentleman know, we think he's doing a great job. You know, your team is doing a great job, so but I kind of looking at the uh. When things were being reported a certain way and were not being accurate, it's just like he came in and took this thing and. Um you know, he's, he really made some things happening, so uh just, just want to thank your team and it just makes sense about the, about the roof and the ceiling. So appreciate that update.
I would definitely let him know.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, any questions for uh Pam, any, anyone have any questions or comments? Next on the agenda is the, the resolutions and that's where one was added to um. To that, so Ms. Askew.
Alright, we'll start with the um bad debt write-off resolution and uh that'll be uh Ms. Livingston, so I'll let her um speak on that one.
Okay, um I will be covering the, covering the um bad debt write-off resolution. Zero two point two one point zero one. So um every year we come to the Board of Commissioners and we ask for uncollectible tenant accounts receivable balances. Um to be written off, these are balances after the residents have moved out and and with. Um several attempts to collect, we have not been successful with collecting these losses, so. As of twenty twenty-one, December twenty, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, Trent Court, five thousand five hundred one dollars and forty cents. New Bern Towers, two thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, total collection loss, eight thousand eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh we are asking for approval so that we can write these off and put it into a nationwide uh debt owed system created by HUD. So that um with, when residents move somewhere else, um the system. Um landlords can utilize the system to see if they owe any bad debt. It has been successful and with that, we are able to collect on the bad debt recovery. So if we uh, if we can scroll back up to the other page, Ms. Askew's, for the twenty twenty bad debt recovery. Um for public housing, uh Trent Court was four thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Craving Terrace was two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety cents. Total bad debt recovery was seven thousand three hundred twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents. And at the time, uh New Bern Towers do not have any bad debt that they, they, they were able to collect, so. Um the Housing Authority will reduce the tenant accounts expenses in approximately, in approximately of eight thousand eighteen dollars. And twenty-nine cents for the previous year. Okay, so um with the approval of the Board, we're asking for these um debts to be re- uh removed. Um however, they will remain in the system, but they would just be put into the um in HUD's Nationwide Debt Owe Collection Agency.
I guess we need a motion to put that forth, do we not, Mr. Norman?
Do.
I move that we uh, we uh uh move forward with that uh debt, bad debt write-off resolution. And the sooner we do it, the sooner that money gets posted in that nationwide uh system, so. I move that we, we do that.
With a second. All in favor of the resolution moving forward as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, like sign. Resolution approved, you have another, you have two more?
Yes, sir.
One more.
Um so the next one is for our vehicle disposition resolution and again, that's Ms. Livingston and I'll let her um speak to you all on that one.
Okay.
Okay, um resolution approving for vehicle disposition, um resolution number zero two point two one point zero two. This resolution is asking the approval of the Board to allow the staff of the Housing Authority to um go into auction. Where we can um auction off three vehicles um that's listed in fair condition, our two thousand five Ford Escape. Twenty-ten Ford F-150 and the twenty-eleven Ford F-150. Um the Housing Authority will, the Authority will reduce maintenance expenses. Um by thirty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars over the next five years. Regarding the sale of the vehicle by public auction, the Authority stands to gain anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. It's based on Kelly Blue Book and all revenues granted from the sales of these vehicles will be allocated to the original funding source. Per state and federal disposition guidelines. So um.
Who will conduct the auctions?
The staff. And um I reached out to um Stephanie, um. Uh the ending of last week, uh where she talked to Jamie and um. We as staff, uh we can participate as long as we follow the same guidelines as um as other bidders.
It'll be a sealed bid process, so um those that would like to bid on the vehicles and of course we'll um advertise this and make sure, you know, the communities are aware and. You know, that anyone who would like to be, they would have to um submit a sealed bid for um the purchase of the vehicle and. More than likely, um Commissioner uh or Chairman Scott will probably be opening up those just to make sure everything is done. That should be, so um we'll, we'll uh take sealed bids.
You know, believe it or not, there, there may be some demand for those trucks, I mean. You know, used vehicles are hot, hot commodities right at the moment.
Right, well, we are planning on advertising it in the um local Sun Journal for at least thirty days um. After the approval, um to give um folks time to um to be notified of the auction.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question, how long, okay, for thirty days?
Well, it's gonna be aver, I mean, it won't be in the paper for thirty days, but we are gonna run at least several um weekends throughout the thirty days.
Okay.
It's very expensive to run it for.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, yeah, but it'd be in the people's hearing that long, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. James, I, I had a few little um comments. The Housing Authority is not required to follow the disposition laws that apply to, for example, the city or the county. But traditionally we have, um because if you do follow the, the statutes for disposition or getting rid of property. Um that apply here to the city of New Bern, uh you're going to guarantee that the process is going to be accurate and correct. Um I think the idea of selling the vehicles is, is fine, um I would just add to the motion. That you do it um in consultation with legal counsel and in accordance with Article twelve of um. General Statutes, Chapter one sixty A, and essentially that will, will allow you to proceed with the auction. It will give you the specific time periods for the auction advertisements. It also allows the option of an electronic uh auction, if, if you wanted to go that route, there is a electronic system set up for local governments to use. In North Carolina, um but so that, that, I would just add that as part of the motion that you do it in accordance of. Um consistent with Chapter one sixty-eight, Article twelve.
Okay, I make the motion then that uh we proceed with the vehicle disposition to include the extra chapters that. Mister Norman added. To uh, to uh sell the uh, the vehicles that we are no longer in need of.
Can you get a second?
I second.
Those in favor of the resolution, uh moving forward according to Chapter one sixty-eight, Article twelve with legal counsel. And the other thing specified by uh counsel, um. Do so by, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, like sign. Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Norman, um next resolution.
Okay, the next resolution is a joint resolution uh with the city of New Bern. Um related to the Trent Court um project and I'll let um. Mister Norman uh explain this um joint resolution to you.
Thank you, uh Executive Director, um and Mr. Chairman, i- if, if it's okay. I'll provide some of the legal um background on this document. Uh you have been involved in discussions along with the Executive Director with the city and you may want to add some context. If uh um do not provide the full picture that you want to have the, in front of the Board. But this is a joint resolution that uh I drafted along with input from the city attorney. In accordance with uh an understanding that we had with uh city leadership and the Housing Authority uh leadership. As a means to advancing the Trent Court. Um uh regeneration or demolition or transformation, however you want to put it. But allowing and making it um clear that the city and the Housing Authority are committing to work together. As best they can to facilitate the transformation of the Trent Court property. Uh this was triggered specifically by a requirement imposed by FEMA and HUD. Uh that we conduct an environmental review of that property before it's torn down. And as part of that environmental review, we conduct a um study of any historic value that the property might have and how we might mitigate that. Um if the historic property is destroyed and if it, if it's demolished, how do you mitigate that? All of those are future events that need to happen in the future, those would require agreements and additional approvals by this Board. And by the, potentially by the city uh Board of Aldermen. So we're not asking you to provide any final approval tonight. Instead, we've presented a joint resolution that allows the city and the Housing Authority to proceed. With the concurrence of both of their boards with a basic understanding of responsibilities. And I'll go through those responsibilities um. And, and sort of explain what, what you're getting into if you wanted to approve this. Uh essentially, um the joint resolution acknowledges by the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. That the city of New Bern will become the responsible entity for conducting the environmental review. Um that is actually a requirement by HUD. Um and if the city agrees to uh do, become the responsible entity. Then that just means that you will be working together in accordance with what's already been required by HUD, but this is your agreement to do it. If the city decides not to be the responsible entity, then um you will have to go to the county and ask them, if the county does not do it. Um the state of North Carolina will step up and do it. Um so as, in accordance with HUD and I think just, just general um policy as, as I understand it. That the um Board of Commissioners would want to go with the city of New Bern first. Essentially, that just means that the city would be the umbrella organization that would allow the environmental review to go forward, it would allow um discussions with. HUD, FEMA, with the State Historic Property um Office as well as, I guess, possibly Department Environmental Quality. And it's clear that under this, you would have to have some sort of memorandum of understanding that would lay out the responsibilities. And we've drafted that and attached it to the joint resolution. Uh essentially, the memorandum of understanding says that the city will be the responsible entity, the umbrella organization. But the Housing Authority will be essentially responsible for doing the work and paying any costs, which is again, in accordance with regulations and. Would be, I would think, possibly, probably um close to a hundred percent reimbursement by FEMA. For those calls. And the duties and responsibilities um would extend along those lines. Uh you can terminate this agreement if things just go off the rails or you go down a different path. You're perfectly free to terminate this agreement on thirty days' notice. Uh the city can terminate it on ten days' notice if they believe that we're not upholding our end of the bargain. Um and it really allows you to take the next steps in a formal way. Um it's my understanding that the City Board of Aldermen has not approved this joint resolution, but that they might be considering it at their upcoming meeting. Tomorrow night. Um so it's, it's really an advancement of, I think, where you are going with Trent Court, it's part of the process. That is established by HUD and FEMA. Uh that said, of course, you're not required to approve anything. Um and you certainly, if you have any questions, we can work through those now or, or later. But I, but I, I will mention that um it, it would, it would be beneficial to move as quickly as you can because we do have. State and federal agencies waiting on us to make the next step. I'll stop there if you have any additional questions or input, Mr. Chairman.
I have no questions, but just wanted, for the benefit of the Board, the um of the Commissioners. There was a ball already moving and um the city had already engaged uh some, some, some things and. It's actually an opportunity for us to, to go deep into partnership the way that we should be. And um uh Mister Norman, you laid it out, laid it out pretty good. And us coming together on this, on this venture is in the best in, interest of the citizens. And I think it opened up the door for some other things and uh Executive Director, um Ms. Askew. Is also a matter of expert and uh we sat in on the meeting and this is what came out of the meeting, we set on a potential of this memorandum of understanding. Board members, you have some questions, uh this be uh, if you don't, if you don't have a question right now, we still got some time as you think about it overnight. Just let us know, but I think it's a great, great thing, I said in the meeting and I think we um. We came to a place that uh where this, we saw where the city, uh the environmental thing like, as Mister Norman said, these are all. These things are required, so they're gonna have to get done by somebody, it's just that the city had already had traction going. And uh like to Ms. Askew, what do you want, she, she just got no board and when she heard, it's like, okay, it's an opportunity for us to work together. And so I think it. And so I think it, I think it is a great thing that we should give consideration to. Yes, sir.
I think we need to probably move on this tonight if the city is meeting tomorrow. Is the city meeting tomorrow, Mr. Norman?
Yes, certainly are. And if we, if, if the executive director or the chair reported to the city that you've already approved it, that might be helpful.
It is, it is on our agenda. It is on our agenda for tomorrow night.
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion, please, Mr.
Yes, yes, please do.
I would like to make the motion that we move forward with the joint resolution. The Part fifty-eight and the Section one oh six review and to also include the MOA.
Can you second?
Um, I don't mind seconding, seconding that motion, but the documents that I got, the board packet, this resolution is not in there.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just added it probably like three-thirty-ish, but I can, I'm gonna send that out to you guys real quickly. And so I will send that to you so you can get the full read of it.
Commissioner, I, I appreciate that comment. And I'll point out that if after you read it, you have any serious concerns, we can always come back
Yeah.
and work with the city on an amendment. That's, that's sort of the best I can do as far as the, the process goes, if you want to approve it today.
I'm, I'm good with that, Ms. Commissioner Reddick. You good with that?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so you second it?
Yes, I second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of seconding the resolution, joint resolution regarding Trent Court by the city of New Bern and the Housing Authority, the city of New Bern and the memorandum of understanding? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, like sign? All right then. Well, thank you all for, this is imperative that it get moving forward. And, and I just believe favor is rested about us taking this action with the partnership together that some things are gonna happen to the, to the good for this. So, and if things need to be adjusted, Mr. Norman, to make sure those things get, get taken care of. And we'll do the best as we can moving forward that we all stay involved and informed on this. Because I think this is gonna be a turning point for the community. Executive Director, any more comments or discussion on that?
For tonight.
Okay. Right, then, we, we're done with that. We had a point of adjournment then.
Mr. Chairman, can I just point a, point of clarification?
Yes.
Earlier, we, we made an amendment to the minutes to correct that numerical problem.
Right.
The, I think the motion was our standard motion to approve as presented. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it was approved.
Correction.
Presented and presented. Mr. Bengal for pointing that out.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bagel.
Also, I just emailed the updated packet to everyone and also to you, Alderman Bagel.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
We have any more messages? I'm adjourned.
Okay. Thank you all for your time this afternoon and, and helping me process through this one on the day. It, it will get better, I promise you, you know. But thank you for all you're doing. I'm excited really about the direction everything is going. And I tell you, a huge thing is, and thank you, Alderman Bagel. I think one of the huge thing is to see the city and the, and the Housing Authority come together on a project like this. I just think it's gonna open up some other opportunities that's gonna favor the citizens. Because that's what it's all about, the residents of this great city. Thank you all for your time at this time and meeting adjourned.
We were six feet apart.
You sure were, Mr. Monte.
Thank you.
Thank you all.